Brendan, what do you have?
The ones I had. And then talking to Dan earlier about there was a wage for the potential tenants for the next five months.
That's a common affair.
No. That was the person that they brought in to credit.
So it was more like it wasn't fair.
Well, yeah, it could be.
Yeah. I can justify that, but just for... So I was hoping that I could justify that $3,000 that she worked on the fairies this August through July.
It was July through September. It was July through September, August through September. And it's only the first week, so I probably don't want to get arrested. And she went through that for nine months.
And the only other one I had was my group's eight votes for competition. Where did you put your argument?
Well, part of the kind of argument, part of all the reasons that I would do it was in person. So if you might about to lose the cost or something.
It's on there. You have so much more. Yes, he has a voice. We have the voice. Oh, no. I think those were mellons, but sometimes.
That was one of my concerns. Yes.
Just for last week, did she remember?
No. She did not. I thought she said no.
Yeah, I thought it was hospital. So I said, I said, I'm sorry. Hey, for the, well, it's a student contract.
Um, so what was that?
No, we never did. Sorry. But, um, remember the day of the case?
Oh, yeah.
That's the thing.
Well, we got an interrogation back. And everything been higher. And I read on the read, we see this, and go over the floor. There's still plenty of minutes.
So Saturday.
Fire people. So I moved. Even though the interest was.
It's not regarding.
No, she's like, we could deliver.
It's one of those things.
It was their board.
That's why. I mean, I usually.
And we had the.
Do you do that? Yeah. No, that's. No, that's not that. Just not that.
Yeah. They just think I'm cursed.
So Ted, this all happened. Which is weird that she's a shooting.
He had her doing.
What's happening?
He thinks he's doing.
Oh, absolutely. Sorry. Hello, Michelle. It's like every day, whether I want it to or not. I've had a sinus infection for two months. I have double ear infections. I've to the doctor again Monday night because I, yeah, I've never gotten rid of it. I think it's double ear infection, sinus infection. It always, it always helps. Everything going good for you guys?
No.
Yeah. Not good at all.
And Commissioner Palmer. What we basically did is we took out a lot of the things that we just have never enforced. Numbers on, on buildings and, and you know, just, just different things like that. What we have done is we've really defined what we do in the definition portion of the ordinance. And we, we have also included all the other departments that we work with. As you, as you're aware, the last couple of years, Community Enrichment Department has really enforced all the rules, all the, all the ordinances for Butte Silver Bow. And so our folks that we work with in our department are really cross-trained in everything. So for us to do our job, we do need the other departments to, to support what we do. And so it's really written very well by the County Attorney's Office. And I think that in the next, next few weeks, we should, we should be able to introduce the new community decay ordinance to the Council of Commissioners and, and see what you folks think of it. So that's where we're at with that. If there's any questions on that, I'll be glad to answer them. If not, we'll go ahead and have John Mudry discuss the vacant building ordinance that was passed in, what, July?
Okay, thank you, Ed. Anybody have any questions for Ed? Ed, is that red line version available to the rest of the council or?
No.
It's not?
Yeah, it is. I brought a copy that I just didn't have a chance, so I was gonna leave it. And, or I can email all of you folks in the morning.
Tracy could send it to us, that would work.
I could do that.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Looking forward to it, seeing it.
It's, it's really a strong, strong ordinance.
And also, I recall, gosh, this is a while ago, I believe that there's a portion of there and that talks about the Council Commissioners having to authorize certain things that are done at the appeals level. I think that we were, was that not taken out of there? I believe that at one time it was, it's still in there, but I don't think that we are.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
It is, okay. County Attorney's.
Hold on, what did you say?
I was just asking.
Is it correct? No, Council Commissioners really is gonna be out of the decision-making and the appeals process.
That's what we were, I think we voted to do that.
It'll be in district court.
Okay.
From now on. We also have a, just a quick, a portion in there that we will be able to go on people's properties after a process and charge them fees and to do the work if they don't do them, so.
Okay, great, I remember we did that. It's nice to get that out of the, out of the ordinance. I think that's probably a good thing, so. Any other questions? John, go ahead. Listen to the vacant building ordinance. Thank you, Ed. Look forward to that.
Madam Chair, members of the council. For the record, my name is John Mudry. I am the Assistant Director of Community Enrichment. And, excuse me. The vacant building ordinance was, became effective in July of this year. One of the reasons that, and I've had questions from the council, from members of the community, you know, where we're going with this. We were right in the middle of a, of a, you know, a spray season with weeds. I had two of my enforcement people doing weeds and I had, you know, we had the alley rally program going. A lot of our community enrichment issues that we deal with all summer long, and we're right in the middle of that. And we did roll out a, a form that a, a landowner can fill out and with the information that we're required. So we do have a registry that we've started. We have, in the last couple of weeks, we have sent out letters to vacant buildings that we are very well aware of, that were in the building inventory that was done two years ago in 2014. One of the things that we've really seen is we're seeing that the landowners are really being receptive to this. They are asking a lot of questions. So we are getting it started and we're getting going on it. One thing I did do is I did give a handout so that we can do this properly and do it right and have this information in the right hands at the right time when, when we need it or other departments within Butte Silver Bow needs it. We are working with MIS right now to develop a database, a shareable database between all the agencies that we deal with that will be dealing with these vacant buildings. You know, from fire services, law enforcement, building and code, zoning, planning, the utility companies, land records, our health department for health and safety issues, deeds, liens, tax status on property, super fund issues with properties that we're dealing with. And, you know, anything that Public Works may have issues with you. That the handout that you have there is a, one of the databases that we've been looking at. It's called Building Blocks. And I, I urge you all to go out and look at this website. It's on the handout that I gave you. It really shows what this information we get in this registry, how we would be able to use it through all the departments, through all the, the agencies that have codes within Butte Silver Bow. What we can, so we know what's going on in these buildings and how Butte Silver Bow would be able to look at trends in housing development, investment, and to know how better to market these properties, how better to help the landowners out and really use that database as a tool and not as a, as we said when we brought this first forward, this is not a hammer, this is not meant to be punitive. This is a tool to be used to, you know, get us, get Butte Silver Bow back on the right track with redeveloping these vacant properties in the largest historic district in the country. So we're working on that. We hope that, well, as you can see with MIS, they've been kind of busy. So we've, we've been working with them, with John Coles, and we look to have something right after the first of the year of some type of database or at least have a decision how we're gonna go forward, whether we're gonna do it in-house or go out for a software company to do it. But there's a lot of information that we're gonna obtain through this registry and we just wanna do it right and we just wanna make sure that everybody involved, it is not just a community enrichment issue. It, you know, it oversees, overshadows almost every department within Butte Silver Bow. So we wanna make sure that we do this right. And just a couple of little things I wanted to add to Ed's comments on the decay ordinance. And I really want to emphasize the enforceability of that ordinance. I've been doing enforcement, code enforcement through the weed department now for almost 20 years. So I, I think I kind of get it and we really need to be very cautious. As I've, I think I've emphasized this to everybody on the council, is we are dealing with property rights when we're dealing with this new decay ordinance. And we are interpreting the law every time one of my code enforcement or our code enforcement officers steps on a piece of property. So we really want a ordinance that we can enforce and that we can enforce it fairly across the board. And there are some things that really aren't enforceable, like Ed said, there's numbers on buildings, painting buildings. You know, now one of the biggest facade is Barnwood. So I don't know how, how I would ever get my guys to enforce to paint barnwood on the side of a house, so. So it's, it's just a couple of things as we go through this process with the new community decay. I, I hope you look at it with an open mind and that, you know, I, we've got people out there on the ground that are dealing with this on a daily basis. And we deal with a, a lot of the people out there, a lot of the community. And if you please keep in mind that poverty is not a crime when we go through this process, please keep that in mind because that's a lot of the people we deal with on a daily basis. And any questions? I'm here and Ed's here, so.
Any questions? I do have a comment because I know you guys, you, you really go beyond the pale to help people. And I think that shows when you talk about, you know, poverty. I know that your entire team is very sensitive to that and I really applaud you for going the extra mile with a lot of these folks. It's, it's very obvious, so. And I see Commissioner Morgan asked to speak. I gotta continue to look at my computer. Commissioner Morgan, then Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. John, I was approached by one individual that was received that questionnaire for the vacant building and they didn't have any problem with it. The only suggestion that they thought maybe would be appropriate is the question where it asks to list the insurance company and, and some of the details pertaining to that. Maybe have it optional. They didn't feel that that was something that they needed to disclose with you, but just some input to, to look at. So maybe just flag some of them as required and optional so that they don't have to fill them out if they don't want to.
John, did you want to respond to that?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Morgan. We, you know, and, and I'm sorry that the wording maybe in the questionnaire was not, you know, explicit enough. We feel that everything on that form is optional other than the description of the property, the owner of the property and contact information. Everything else I think we can work through. The biggest reason we're asking for insurance carriers, as you know, a lot of you know, is we have a lot of burnt out buildings that are, are burnt buildings that are either being sold on contract or have rentals insurance on them, do not have any insurance on them. We just tore one down on our dime on 322 West Gold. And that was Butte Silver Bow. We paid to have that done because of that. There was no insurance on the property, there was people working in the property. And, you know, it's just information for us. And, and we've worked, you know, we, we've had the same comments back to us and, and we are working with, with the landowners. It's just, it would be nice if they do have insurance or if they don't have insurance, we would just like to know that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
It's really a work in progress.
Yeah.
You know, everything is optional on that and we'll be more specific on that. Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. We're making the, the process as easy as we can. I know that our staff has put in names, land descriptions, geo codes and everything so that these folks don't have to do that. So we're taking the time to do that, but we'll surely change that tomorrow morning. It's a good idea and we should have been more, but, but everything on that is optional, absolutely.
And it is a work in progress and we appreciate that too, so. Commissioner Perdul and then Commissioner Fisher. That's how they came up on my speaker list, sorry Jim.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both for all this information. I just have a, a quick question and I think, John, you, you alluded to this when you said that the enforcement, and you're going to do this fairly as you can. What can you tell folks that this is going to be a tool and not an intrusion?
John?
Chairman Shaw, Commissioner Perdul. It's, you know, and especially in the, and when I was alluding to that, that is within the decay ordinance and also in the building registry. You know, we want the information to help the person. We don't want to be intrusive, we don't want to be enforcive. And the reason that we, in the first year, we are not charging a fee. So we are obtaining information from these people. And we've had the instance where we, we have actually made the call within our office that these buildings are, you know, there's nobody living in them and that definition of vacant building has come up. But we have made the decision that we have a couple that are, they're using it for a business use. So the building is, you know, is vacant, but it is being occupied by, for storage of construction equipment, different things. So again, we don't want to be enforcive with the building code. One of the biggest questions we get right away is right now is, what do I have to do? I mean, you know, they, they want to have it registered because they do look in it and see what the punitive side of that is. And, and we are being very open with them right at this point in time and saying we are not gonna be punitive with it, so.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Perdul. I think again, it's a work in progress and the proof is really gonna be in the pudding. You know, how we, how, how our staff deals with the vacant building ordinance. You know, if we do exactly what we've promised everyone will do, it's, 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 it's not an intrusive thing. It's not so that we can enforce and be mean to folks. If we act the way we should and do things the way that we should be doing them, which our staff will, I, I promise you that, you'll have no issues. But it, it's gonna take time for us to prove, just like anytime we do something new or different or off the charts or something new, you know, we have to prove that, that we're being honest and that, you know, this isn't a ploy to get anything. And, and so, so it's, it's gonna, I think in two years, it'll be a, a little different story. I think people will really appreciate what we're doing. Not that they don't now, but they'll, there will be more trust on both sides, so.
Thank you, Ed. Okay, Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, John, thank you, Ed. It was a week or two ago here, Lori Baker, our treasurer, was in and gave us a anyone can go online and look up properties, you know, and see if the taxes are current or in arrears or whatever. A couple of years ago, Travis, I think it was Echolsen, whoever, done the building inventory for us and graded the buildings, vacant buildings like one to five or bad to good or whatever it was. And now we have a vacant building ordinance that we're working on now. How do you see, sometimes that seems like a little bit of a duplication of duties. Is there somewhere we can integrate these two or three or four things we've done over the last four years since I've been here to make sure that we're not duplicating duties and that we're using, you know, like Lori Baker's presentation was pretty cut and dry, they'd be go online and look. Travis, he went and inventoried buildings as an intern from tech and wrote the buildings. And now we're gonna vacant building ordinance where we're doing another research and then sending out letters to them. Can you tell me how this is gonna network or integrate a little bit so that we have a little more comfort that something's really gonna be done besides, you know, just three different departments doing three different things, you know what I'm saying?
John, would you care to answer that?
Chairman Shaw, Commissioner Fisher. It's, you know, and it's, it's what I was getting to with the, with the database. And we are working with Lori Baker. It, it's so that we have one spot that all these, this information is in. Commissioner Fisher, so that we are not duplicating. So i- if fire services wants to look something up on this piece of property, they will see a list of everything that's with this property or every issue that's ever been with this property. Same for us in community decay. We will go to this one spot and find the information. And that's why it's taken us so long. I mean, we did, you know, we, we kind of jumped in in July, but we did not, and, and this is me, I did not want to do this improperly and duplicate efforts. We want to make sure that everybody has, this is an open database. Everybody within the county has access to it and anything that they have done with this certain piece of property or any certain piece of property. And as you can see on that handout, in that, in a database which we're gonna try to get similar, you can see all the different departments that would be able to use that data and that information. And, you know, the starting point was the inventory. So we're going a step farther from the inventory at this point. So I, I think we're, you know, we're on the right track. And, you know, I can assure you, I'm a person that does not want to do things twice. I don't want somebody coming behind me and doing something. So we want all the information in one spot, so we are not duplicating any effort.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Fisher. What, what the treasurer is doing is, is what she does. What we're talking about is completely different things. You know, her information is, is a part of information that we may choose to, to look at and we do daily when we're looking at a property. What the inventory did, what, what the treasurer does, what the zoning department does, you know, they're all different databases, they're all different things, but, but it's still not a duplication of services. We all do a lot of different things and a lot of work. What, and, and I could go on and on about this, I'm not going to, but this database that we're looking for will combine everything so it is in one area. You know, we can look at it and see where the taxes are at, where this is at, have we enforced it before, weeds issues, zoning issues, whatever. But everyone's gonna have to put their data into this thing. So when you say a duplication of services, it's really not at all. I mean, everyone has a different portion of, of what they're doing. This will really help us combine it so that we're more efficient.
Follow up, Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Ed, thank you, John. And I guess maybe not duplication of duties or anything like that. What I'm saying is, these systems in my mind seem like they should be integrated and networked some way because, let's, you know, if you see a piece of property that's on the tax rolls and it's, you know, vacated, the inventory building was a five if that was the worst, or it's a one that was the best that could be reclaimed. I mean, these things should be integrated somehow, excuse me, so that, you know, these departments work together. And I think this is something that is my suggestion in the future is to, I don't know how familiar you are with Lori Baker's program, I don't know how familiar she is with yours or the building inventory that was taken. I think that was three years ago, it was after I soon got on the commission. But I wish you the best and I, I know it's an endless duty, but I do think it'd be wise to everyone work together and instead of creating a new program, maybe see what we have in the old and integrate them and network together. So we have a.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Fisher, we have.
Yep.
You know, there's a specific for what they use it for. You know, we have to come up with a, with a process which, which we really hope we can do in-house and, and with Nate and those folks down there. Combine all the information so that everyone has access to it.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and that is just an example in front of you of, of a software that is out there. It is the most inclusive one that I could find in my research. And MIS is looking at it. It was just, it was the most inclusive, that's why I wanted you guys to look at it. And if you can go out on, on the web and look at it, it's pretty interesting.
Commissioner Perdul, then Commissioner Ralph.
I apologize, I wanted to follow up with you, Ed. What is the cost of this software?
Thank you. John?
It's expensive. I can tell you right now, it's expensive.
In a word.
That's why we're working with MIS to maybe design it in-house. I have approached John Sesso and, and the planning department is on board with this. Pat Reardon is also involved in the decision-making on, on what software we're gonna go forward with or are we gonna develop it in-house? So it's, you know, we're not looking at spending any money at this point in time at all. We're, we're trying to do it to what would work best for us and what would work best for the taxpayers.
Okay, Ms. Randall?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Perdul. We have several different databases that we've developed on our own or MSS or MIS has developed for us. You know, we really need to update and, and we're hoping we can do it in-house. If not, we're sure, we're gonna come knocking, you know, and, and everything. But we really, we really hope that we can just, we can get it done so that it's, it's available for everyone.
Commissioner Ralph?
Thank you. I just want, boy, this loud. Thank you, I just wanted to give you kudos. I really appreciate everything you've done and, and getting everything integrated is definitely, I think, the way to go. And keep up the good work, we really appreciate it.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Ralph, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, guys. We'll look forward to seeing your new ordinance amendments. Okay, moving to section two, this is our consent agenda. Questions or friendly amendments? Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to segregate number, or out of the consent agenda. Communication. Number one, communication sixteen dash five zero four and communication number ten, sixteen dash five one three.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, section two or section A one through six and section B one through eleven with the exclusion of number one, communication sixteen five oh four and number ten, communication sixteen dash five one three.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda, section A one through six and B one through eleven. Anything on the question? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, we'll start with number one, communication number sixteen dash six, communication sixteen dash five zero four. Sheriff Ed Lester, Butte Silver Bow Law Enforcement Department, requesting Council Commissioners confirm appointments of Jake Hanley and Brian Ellingson to the Butte Silver Bow Law Enforcement Department. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll refer to Sheriff Lester.
Okay.
Commissioner Morgan, Madam Chair, members of the council. This is one of those nights where I come before you that, of course, I'm asking for something all the time, but this is a, this is a good ask and doesn't really cost us a whole bunch. I bring tonight Officer Jake Hanley, badge number one eleven, and Officer Brian Ellingson. What up, fellas? Badge number one twelve. They have recently completed their one-year probationary period with our department. As I've said in the past, you don't become an officer in Butte Silver Bow by accident. It's an extensive process with a lot of testing and some physical testing and I want to make sure you get my good side. It might take all night. So they have completed all the testing process and then the background check and then they attended the Montana Law Enforcement Academy. And they did an outstanding job there. And then they completed a twelve-week field training officer program with our department and then they've been on their own since then. And I haven't had any complaints from anybody, their training officers or anybody else. And I know they've done a good job because I've read the reports and they've seen some things that probably nobody should see in those, that one year, but that's part of our job and, and they've done a good job. And so it's just a mere, a few years ago, twenty-seven to be exact, I stood before the council within Sheriff Bob Butorovich asking for my confirmation. And he said that he was very confident that the community would be in good hands at that time. I don't know that he was correct or not, but I'm hoping that if I'm still around in twenty-seven years, these guys will still be working here in Butte Silver Bow and, and I know we're gonna be in good hands. So with that, I would just ask that you concur with my request to confirm Officer Jake Hanley, badge number one eleven, and Officer Brian Ellingson, badge number one twelve, as permanent members of the Butte Silver Bow Law Enforcement Department.
Thank you, Ed. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, it brings me great pleasure to make the motion to confirm Jake Hanley and Brian, Brian Ellingson to the Butte Silver Bow Police Department and place this communication on fire or on file.
Thank you.
Don't steal my thunder.
Bill, don't steal his thunder. All right, we have a motion and a second to confirm with the appointments of Officer Hanley and Officer Ellingson to the Butte Silver Bow Law Enforcement Department. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. And thank you. Congratulations. Okay. All right, moving along to item number ten. This is communication sixteen dash five one three. David Schultz, Director Butte Silver Bow Public Works Department, requesting Council Commissioners authorize the Chief Executive to sign a contract with SMA Architects Design and Construction for the Oversight Services for the Community Pool Project. Mr. Schultz gave us an amended version of this a few days ago, so I was calling on Commissioner Morgan to please concur with that recommendation. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The reason that I segregated this was just as Cindy said, there was some amendments in here and I just wanted to clarify that in the motion. So if you guys have any questions, let Cindy know. But at this time, I'll make a motion that we concur with communication sixteen dash five one three as amended and place this communication on file.
We have a motion and a second to concur with communication sixteen dash five one three as amended and placed on file. Anything on the question? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, John. Section three, ordinances and resolutions for final reading. Item one, council resolution number sixteen dash six five. Could the clerk please read the title?
Council Resolution sixteen sixty-five. A resolution vacating, closing, discontinuing and abandoning any alley located in block thirty-seven of the Butte Townsite addition in the city and county of Butte Silver Bow, state of Montana, more particularly described in exhibit A attached heretofore and incorporated herein, finding the necessary facts herein and prescribing the effective date of this resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I move to place council resolution sixteen dash six five on final reading and past having been deemed fully read at length.
Can you push the second button? Please, thank you. Motion in a second to move the council resolution number sixteen dash six five to final reading. And where do we? This is a roll call vote. Has everyone voted? Would anyone care to change their vote? Okay, we'll hold that, hold that thought. We're still in a transition of learning our new voting system. And we have a guru up here, Nate, is gonna help us. Uh-oh, a malfunction. Oh, no. Oh, no. Okay. So we've all voted, we don't need to vote again, Nate? Okay. All right. Anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Nine ye, zero nay.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item 2, Council Resolution Number 16-66. Would the clerk please read the title?
Council Resolution Number 1666, a resolution vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning a portion of Wa- Wakisha Street located in the Open Treasure and Empire Edition in the city and county of Butte Silver Bow, state of Montana, more particularly described in Exhibit A attached hereto and incorporated herein, finding the necessary facts herein and prescribing the effective date of this resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to place Council Resolution Number 16-66 on final reading and past having been deemed fully read at length.
We have a motion and a second to place Council Resolution 16-66 on final reading and past. This is a roll call vote. Got to get our votes up here. Okay. Has everyone voted? Would anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Nine ye, zero nay.
Okay. Motion carries. Item 3, Council Resolution 16-67. Would the clerk please read the title?
Council Resolution Number 1667, a resolution setting the 2017 fiscal year annual salaries of the Chief Executive, County Attorney, Sheriff, Clerk, and Recorder, Treasurer, Assessor, City Judge, Justice of the Peace, Auditor, Superintendent of Schools, Clerk of the District Court, Coroner, and Members of the Council of Commissioners and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I move to place Council Resolution Number 16-67 on final reading and past having been deemed fully read at length.
We have a motion and a second to move Council Resolution to final reading. This is a roll call vote. Has everyone voted? Anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Eight ye, one nay.
The Council Resolution passes. Commissioner Fisher? Who voted nay?
Dale Anderson.
Okay. Commissioner Fisher? Oh, okay. Is there anything further? All right, thank you. Thank you, Nate, for your help on that. Public comment on any public matter not on tonight's agenda? If there's anyone out in the audience that'd like to speak on anything that's not on tonight's agenda, now's the opportunity to do so. Sir, come on up to the microphone and give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Jim Gare. My address is 8394 West Carren Grove, Shore Lane, Iowa. I am the business manager for OPCMA Local 72, and I represent cement masons and plasters in the state of Montana. And I would like to comment on work being done up at Copper Mountain Recreation Park. I understand this is a project that was awarded to an out-of-state non-union bidder some time ago. I was up there today and I took some pictures of the concrete work. Would it be all right if I gave these to the council members?
Well, there's, there's no dialogue or anything like that. You can certainly hand them to our secretary and she can make them available to us if you'd like. Sure. Oh, well, you know what, you can scan it. I keep forgetting we have a scanner now. Would that make it easier for you to, to scan it, or is it just something you wanted us to have?
It's just something, it's just something I wanted you to, to be able to see. So I wanted to comment on the substandard nature of the concrete work being done in there at this time. I've been in the trade 40 years. I've never seen concrete that poor that has passed inspection. And this is taxpayer dollars that's been paid for this. Add to the council's attention. There's several problems wrong with the concrete there. First, it's decorative concrete. Some of it's colored, very expensive to pour, about twice as much as regular concrete. But when we, when we pour decorative concrete, it's aren't straight, or there's other issues with it, it kind of defeats the purpose of all that money spent. Also, other problems with the curb, it's really crooked. If the council takes time to look at the pictures there, it's not a very professional job. There's some structural problems with the concrete. On the back of the radiuses, the concrete was not consolidated properly, and so it leaves great big voids in it. When water gets in there this winter and freezes and expands, that's going to start to come apart. And so I have some recommendations or hope that the council will consider a couple of things. One, maybe go up there and just take a walk around there and take a peek at that and see what you think. I would recommend that payment not be approved on that project until the concrete is fixed, either torn out and replaced. Not all of it, but, but some of it's very, very poor. And like I say, would not pass inspection anywhere where I've ever, ever been. And also, the third thing I would, I would ask is that considering contractors for this, it appears that the contractor that performed this didn't have the experience or the expertise to perform the work. It is pretty obvious to the trained eye, but I hope you can see that from my pictures, that you would consider local contractors with the experience and qualifications to perform the work properly so that, so you can get, get what you're, you're paying for. And the third thing is, I don't know if this has prevailed or not, but the bid was, the bid amounts were fairly significant from the people who won, the been, the people who lost. And if this is prevailed, I would hope that the council would check and, and confirm that, that prevailed rates were paid on this job.
Thank you very much.
All righty. Thank you.
Any other comment from anyone on any item not on tonight's agenda? No, Ed? Okay. Thank you. Just a reminder, we don't have council next week. I'm sure we all remember that, but just saying that on the record. And then I, I wanted to get a show of hands on who might be attending tomorrow night's election canvas. We have, okay, well, I think we're going to have to fill in probably a couple of people to get enough for, I think we need to have 10, so Sally Hollis will probably come up with a couple other elected officials, but I just want to make sure we have at least... John, you too?
I have an appointment at 4:00.
Okay. All right, thank you, John. All right. So I'll see you all tomorrow at 4:00. Anything else to come before us this evening? Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Of course, I'll see you tomorrow night, but everyone out there. And with that, oh, we do have our calendar of events, so be sure to, to note those as well. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Commissioner Fisher? Tuesday night? No. We, we, we have five Wednesdays this month, so we took off the Wednesday of Thanksgiving. You can come Tuesday night. Well, we sent out a few notices, but... Anything else come before us tonight? Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. See you tomorrow night, 4:00. I should cancel my email. It did. Thank you.
...